Principal Kelly Jackson is here tonight and she will introduce High Crest's Green Team to lead the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I have with me tonight a couple of members of our High Crest Green Team who are going to introduce themselves and their sponsor, Ms. Allison Eckley, who will tell you a little bit about some of the work that the Green Team has done this year.
Thanks, Mrs. Jackson. Hi, my name is Allison Eckley and I am proud to lead the High Crest Green Team. It is a new team, so we are small but mighty and working very hard. I would love for some of our members to introduce themselves and share some of their accomplishments that they're proud of.
I'm Jo Nupsa and this year at High Crest, we've been participating in the Trex Bag Recycling Challenge. It's where people bring bags and put them in a box. We're competing against other schools to get the most amount of bags in weight. And if we win that challenge, a bench made by Trex from the recycled bags is donated to our school and that would really be great.
My name is Eli Trogenheim and another accomplishment that High Crest is proud of is that we have gotten rid of plastic straws in the cafeteria. And that will really help get rid of a lot of plastic pollution that is caused by straws. And the amount of straws that the United States uses every year is enough to fill Yankee stadiums over nine times.
Thank you. We have been really excited to partner with Julie Anderson from the Curriculum and Instruction Department, as well as Ms. Lisa Winters has been very supportive of our green efforts in the cafeteria. Additionally, we've been working on making some posters for some green tips and also some broadcast commercials, so that students at home know practical ways that they can practice being green, both at home and at school. We also would like to thank our spokesperson, Kermit the Frog. He has corrected himself and publicly admitted that it actually is easy being green. And on that note, would you please rise and join us for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much and for all of your green efforts, too. I'd like to bring your attention to the wall behind me. Linda Pritz's High Crest students created the artwork on display in the boardroom this month. Students experimented with many mediums and art techniques. They learned color theory, blending, tinting, and shading with acrylic paints while connecting to artists and their styles of art. Fifth graders learned about anatomy and proportion in creating their surreal self-portraits. Now may I seek a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23, 2017, regular meeting.
So moved.
Thank you. The motion has been... Oh, may I have a second?
Second.
Great. It's been made... Motion has been made and seconded. Board members, are there any comments, corrections to the minutes? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the minutes is submitted, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
The motion carries by general consent. This brings us to the first opportunity for presentations by the audience. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to present to the board? Please come forward to the podium and I must remind you to use a microphone. Please give your name and address and you're allowed five minutes.
Thank you so much. My name is Joel Kursman. I live at 2615 Green Leaf Avenue. Dr. Lechner, District 39 staff, members of the board, and attendees and viewers from the community, good evening. My name is Joel Kursman. I appreciate the opportunity to briefly introduce myself to you as a candidate for the Willmet Village Board of Trustees. As you know, the election is April 4th and early voting begins on March 20. My wife, Allison, and I live on the Green Leaf Laurel Loop just off of Locust Road down the street with our two children. Sophia is a seventh grader at Willmet Junior High and Gabriel is a fourth grader at Ramona. We are exceedingly grateful for the excellent education our kids are receiving. To the members of the board, I wanted to salute you tonight for your contributions to the community. As someone embarking on a similar journey to sir, albeit in a different capacity, I am learning on a daily basis the sacrifice and trade-offs that come with public service. Kudos to you. I welcome anyone in the District 39 community to learn about my stewardship campaign by visiting my website, www.joelforwillmet.com, or to follow me on Facebook by searching for Joel for Willmet. I welcome any questions you might have about my stewardship campaign, which has much fertile ground for collaboration with both Districts 39 and 37. But if not, I just want to thank you again for the opportunity to introduce myself. And again, my name is Joel Kursman and I am running for the Willmet Village Board of Trustees.
Thank you, Mr. Kursman. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to board reports. The first are committee reports. The Strategy Committee, Ms. Levine.
Yes, the Strategy Committee met on January 30 and discussed a variety of topics, several of which are actually going to be addressed tonight. So we reviewed the new strategic initiatives for the strategic plan and that is a topic on tonight's agenda, so we will discuss those. And then we also spent a bit of time discussing new initiatives for the administration to consider for 2017-18 and the administration will continue to work through those and discuss them again at the next Strategy Committee meeting, which is April 3. And we would then expect that we would continue to work on those through to the presentation of the plan later in the summer.
Great, thank you very much. The next two reports, I'll take the Facility Development Report and the School Finance Report. A Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting to discuss the business of both the finance and facilities committees was held Monday, February 13, 2017, at 8:00 a.m. here at the MEC. We discussed many issues, which I'll briefly discuss. The first are construction bids for Ramona and McKenzie Learning Commons and related HVAC, the WJHS boiler replacement, and the McKenzie roof replacement. While the bids for the junior high boiler replacement project came in just under budget, the bids for the Learning Commons projects and the associated large space HVAC projects were 50% over-budgeted numbers. The committee agreed to go ahead and approve the boiler replacement, which is on the consent agenda tonight. And after much discussion about the Learning Commons projects, the board agreed to refine the scope of the project and to reopen the bidding process. The timeline is to approve reworked projects for a second bid next month in order to receive bids in time to continue approvals at April's meeting. Additionally, the McKenzie roofing project will be bid out separately and will be ready for approval in March. Second topic of conversation was the space study at High Crest. It's well underway. Colby Lewis, our STR architect, explained the work at our meeting that has been going on so far with the High Crest staff. Educators created and then ranked various needs and projects proposed for the school. After the vote was tallied, there was an overwhelming consensus for more classroom space and more small group instructional spaces from the teachers. The next vetting and strategic meeting will be with the administration. The third topic was testing for lead in drinking water. Dr. Lechner stated that Illinois has enacted a water testing law and that District 39 has had its water tested by the village this last fall. Regulations have not been finalized by the state, but because the district tested our water with an authorized EPA testing center, there's a possibility that the Department of Public Health will accept the results to satisfy this year's annual requirement. The requirement of the new act only requires testing for pre-K through 5th grades by December 31 of this year. There are 98 identified sources in our buildings that affect pre-K through 5th grade that would need to be tested and the cost would be approximately $6,000. The district has 90 days to submit results and Dr. Lechner noted at the meeting that the district will submit the current results obtained and see if additional testing would be required. Our fourth topic of discussion was a new phone system for District 39. Tony Demont stated that we're currently accepting quotes through March 10 for a new phone system. He noted the two main options are to have a premise-based phone system onsite or to use a cloud-based system. He believed the initial cost investment of the premise-based system would be the recommended route. Board discussion ensued regarding whether a physical phone in every classroom was necessary with Wi-Fi phones built into computers or smartphones. The board also discussed health and safety and whether classroom phones were necessary. So that conversation is to be continued. A fifth subject were our 2018 through 2020 transportation bids. We will have a more detailed report on this subject later tonight, but as an overview, transportation bids from three different bus companies were received February 9. The bids were evaluated on six different criteria. Regular transportation bids are awarded to bidders most able to provide safety and comfort for students, stability of service, and then price. At the meeting, Ms. Buscemi explained the weighted matrix she used to determine the best bid. She recommended continuing bus service with North Shore. The board questioned how her recommendation was obtained. She explained that the bid documents and reference checks that were made weighed heavily in her decision. We will hear more about this during the information portion of our meeting tonight. Finally, prioritizing capital projects was discussed at length. Given limited budget resources, the administration and the board were looking at all projects currently being proposed and creating a priority list. Dr. Lechner explained the four levels of projects. The first are annual maintenance that is built into our annual O&amp;M budget. Second, are must-do projects in each building like roofs, boilers, HVAC systems, repair and replacement. The third are capital projects such as Learning Commons and large space HVAC and unit vent replacements. And finally, fourth, are other strategic plan-based initiatives that require capital investments. It's kind of a long meeting. But our next meeting is also a committee of the whole and will take place on Monday, March 13 at 8:00 a.m. at the MEC. The next board report, committee report is the Insurance Advisory Committee, Ms. Kearney.
Thank you. The Insurance Advisory Committee did meet today at 4:00 at the MEC, where we discussed current claim expenses and open enrollment, where we continue to look at early June scheduling for this year. The balance of the meeting was dedicated to the type... I'm sorry, to the topic of wellness, specifically the wellness screening District 39 currently offers our district staff and its participation. Next meeting is scheduled for May 1st, 4:00 here at the MEC.
Great, thank you. Liaison Committee reports. The first is the Community Review Committee, Ms. Levine.
Yes, the CRC met on February 6 and they are actually working very diligently to try to share their reports at the May meeting. That's their goal for the year. As you recall from last year, there's an ongoing kind of annual audit of a previous report and they're auditing the 2012 Technology and Learning Environments Report and they are kind of moving ahead and they've got an updated audit rubric and report framework and they're working with the templates from last year and kind of continuing to optimize those. On the school climate, there's two subcommittees and both subcommittees are getting ready to go out to parents with a survey, which looks like it should be going out on Friday in the principal's email newsletters. And then they're working on some additional surveys for the 5th through 8th grade students and teachers. Those are being finalized now and should go out shortly as well and their next meeting is March 6.
Great, thank you. The next report is the Educational Foundation, I have that one. Three things going on at the last Foundation meeting. The first is the Science Olympiad. Courses have been completed and they held a successful open house, I think, last Saturday. The Fine Arts Committee is having a Swiss artist come to Willmet in May to work with 8th grade students in 2D and 3D art classes. She will work... Also work with the social studies teachers to incorporate the fourth quarter curriculum of courageous people into art projects. When the projects are completed, there will be a community art show to showcase the artwork, so I'm sure you'll be hearing about that. Finally, the Fundraising Committee of the Foundation is currently working on preparing their 10 Everyday Heroes Ceremony, formerly called the Distinguished Citizen Award. That will be Thursday, April 27 at the Kennelworth Club and we'd encourage everyone to come, including board members. The next Foundation meeting is March 15 at the MEC at 7:00 p.m. WCSCA, Ms. Kearney.
Thank you. WICSE, the Willmet Community Special Ed Association, did not meet since the last board meeting. Will be meeting March 20 at 4:00 at Marie Murphy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Legislative update, Ms. Alcantara.
Okay, so this is a little bit of a catch-up summary sort of thing. So in... You'll recall in late July, Governor Rauner announced the creation of a commission tasked with identifying opportunities for overhauling Illinois' current school funding formula by February 1, 2017. The effort was intended to build on work previously done by senators and representatives regarding advancing an equity funding model and also implementation of an evidence-based funding model. Over the course of the past six months, leading up to February 1, the commission dialogue appears to align more closely to implementation of an evidence-based funding model, but there are many significant conversations that still need to be determined. My assessment of the report, the commission's report, is that there was a collective decision to identify the big issue problems that everybody agreed upon as being big issue problems. In some respects, there were... In some areas, there were recommendations and others notation that they were unresolved. But with respect to District 39, I think some of the biggest big issue problems that are particularly relevant include, well, first of all, the idea with respect to any overhaul of a hold harmless provision so that districts who are spending close to adequacy will not lose funding. The commission appeared to recognize that the current Illinois school funding formula is outdated for determining what is adequate for each school district. The formula does not demonstrate clearly that adequacy targets differ based on individual student needs. So they seem to have acknowledged that the state does not currently have the resources to ensure that all school districts are funded to their individual targets. They... With that being said, the commission expressed a desire to significantly improve equity while approaching adequacy. The commission also looked at whether CPI or Employment Cost Index, ECI, should be used to reflect year-over-year wage adjustments, noting, of course, that an inflator driven by ECI would mean that the minimum funding level would eventually grow larger than the amount by which local property taxes can rise. The commission recognized that Illinois has a nationally recognized inequity in school funding and that it's due not only to a heavy reliance on local property taxes, but also to an inefficient and inequitable formula. The commission touched on district consolidation, noting that the number of school districts in Illinois makes for system inefficiencies and contributes to the inequity within the state. Existing consolidation incentives and initiatives have been underfunded and have often focused on rural school districts rather than consolidating dual school districts into single-unit districts. Currently, in addition, Illinois school districts, as we all know, are required to adhere to over 100 unfunded mandates. These mandates have varying costs, but overall reduce available dollars, increase bureaucracy, and decrease the flexibility for teachers and administrators. Their commission expressed an interest in using mandates or relieving districts of mandates as some sort of incentive. Pension spending is another form of education spending, but often not counted as such. Both the normal cost and the liability are obviously huge costs for the state through TRS. The commission noted that to increase equity in the formula, the distribution model should take into account local capacity and looked at basically how can that local capacity most fairly and accurately be calculated, especially given tensions between the state's high property taxes and the need of communities to depend on those local property taxes for school funding. Finally, Governor Rauner and some members of the commission support the availability of school choice tax credits for individuals or corporations donating money to fund scholarships for low-income students, as long as those schools are nonprofit and the accepting school publishes accountability data equivalent to what is required for public schools. So all in all, there is a report that synthesized problems that we've all been discussing for many years. So we'll see what comes of it and hopefully the report will be... They'll dig into it in Springfield and come up with some... Something more than just recommendations.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda are written communications. The board received written communication from Dan Fogel regarding the Newtir Caucus' selection rules in process. Also, written communication from Raquel Klibenoff and Brenda Worth regarding band and orchestra and proposed school start and end times. Now, let's move on to administrative announcements. Dr. Lechner.
Yes, as we know, Dr. Welter is retiring in June after an impactful and successful tenure at McKenzie Elementary School. Dr. Welter's departure has created some anxiety as we sought to find the ideal candidate to replace her. And as we know, Dr. Welter has big shoes to fill. We began a process last November that culminates this evening. I'm proud to say we were successful in our search. I'd like to introduce Rachel Filippi as the new principal of McKenzie Elementary School. Ms. Filippi comes to District 39 following four years of administrative experience in District 109, Deerfield. She spent the last three years as assistant principal at Walden Elementary School. Prior to that, she was the AP for Student Services at Shepherd Middle School. Ms. Filippi holds a bachelor's degree in marketing and management from the University of Iowa, a master's degree in special education from National Lewis University, and a master's degree in school leadership from Concordia University. Ms. Filippi.
Good evening. I want to say thank you so much for this opportunity to work here in District 39. I'm overwhelmed and excited to start the new school year at McKenzie. I can't wait to get to know all of you. I'm also excited to get to know our McKenzie family, students, and staff. And I've heard nothing... Word travels fast, you know, when the announcement goes out, so lots of connections and I've heard nothing but wonderful things about this district and McKenzie and I just want to send a special thank you to Dr. Welter for her leadership at McKenzie. I know it's a big, big job and I'm excited to be here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we talk about the school calendar for next year. District 39 has a practice of having two school improvement days on the calendar each year. The January draft calendar had only one school improvement day, so the calendar has been revised to add a second school improvement day for February 2, 2018. No other changes, we're still starting after Labor Day. Next, Screenagers. Newtir Township Schools hosted a family engagement night at Central School in Glencoe for a panel discussion and screening of excerpts from the documentary Screenagers. The panel included current and former District 39 students and parents. The evening was very well attended and discussion ranged from what life was like before cellphones to setting limits on technology use for teens and adults. Resources were also provided for families and were made available to District 39 parents after the presentation. Tonight, I have a few staff members to recognize for some special achievements. First, Dr. Romi Cristofaro earned a doctorate degree from UIC last May. Her dissertation titled "A Multi-Case Study Examining Reflection with Collaborative Teacher Inquiry" was recently announced as the winner of the Dissertation of the Year Award from the American Education Research Association. That is a very rare award and Dr. Cristofaro will be receiving her award in April at the ERA Conference in San Antonio. Next, 7th grade science teacher Pete Ower earned his Doctorate of Education degree from DePaul University. Dr. Ower's dissertation is "Experiencing the Implementation of New Science Inquiry Curricula." Finally, I'd like to announce Katie Lee as the administrator for Curriculum and Instruction. She's been serving in an interim capacity and is well-suited for this permanent position. The board will be approving her contract later this evening. Congratulations to all three of these dedicated 39 staffers.
Yay.
Next, enrollment for the 2017 Summer Enrichment Program is well underway. The first registration phases close... The first registration phase closes March 10. We encourage parents to register soon because decisions about classes, which classes are going to be held, are based on those enrollments. Once the classes are finalized, we're going to reopen registration from March 20 through May 5. Next, the board is going to be asked about a tuition student. We have a longtime resident recently moved out of District 39. A parent is requesting the board to allow his daughter to remain at Willmet Junior High School to complete her 8th grade education. The student began in kindergarten in District 39 and would like to graduate with her class. The parent accepts responsibility for non-resident tuition costs and transportation to and from school. This is something we've done previously, but only for 8th graders who are heading to Newtir High School. Next, new board policy 2:150 refers to standing district committees that are required by law. The Parent-Teacher Advisory Committee and a Behavioral Interventions Committee are permitted to join into a single committee. The first meeting of this new committee, which is now called the Parent-Teacher Behavior Advisory Committee, will be scheduled for May and a board member needs to be appointed for that committee as a liaison. Next, and finally in terms of announcements, the district received three FOIA requests this month. Donna McShay requesting 2016 ERB CTP for student testing reports. Adriana Cardona of University of Chicago requesting all asbestos management plans and actions for District 39 schools. And finally, Michael Day requesting long-term subpositions for 2004, '08, '12, '13, '14, '15, '16, '17. The full names of teachers, salaries at hiring, the full names of all persons applying for positions, dated emails, letters, memos from department heads, board members regarding hires selected for interviews, whether hired or not hired, instructions to principals regarding hiring, names, titles, qualifications, and lack thereof, including notes, memos for persons, and focus groups, certifications stating records are true under oath showing of that experience. And that's all.
Great, thank you very much. Our next set of reports are strategic plan updates. The first is school climate, creating culture of empathy.
This report continues our mid-year update of the 2016-17 District 39 Strategic Plan. This month, we're focusing on new initiatives. School climate. District 39 has sought to review its current practices and develop short-term and long-term plans to improve school climate and create a culture of empathy. Proactive measures have taken place, especially in the areas of diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. Administrators will present an update about the action steps that have been taken this year and will share plans as we continue to address this goal moving forward. Katie Lee and a team of administrators have this report.
Thank you, Dr. Lechner. I will share some of our efforts to date and Becky Lippman and Kelly Jackson will follow with more from grades K through 4 and 5 through 8. District 39 has focused on engaging stakeholders in learning about diversity, equity, and inclusiveness. And on August 23, the Teacher Institute Day, Pat Savage Williams, Newtir High School staff member, provided a keynote presentation to our entire returning staff on the culture of diversity and inclusiveness in schools. On the evening of December 6, District 39 hosted a panel discussion and parent forum entitled "Building a Climate of Empathy." The panel included distinguished guests and scholars from various areas of diversity to talk about the process of continuing to build our District 39 community. The Executive Director of Family Service Center attended the parent forum and offered to assist in developing a meaningful follow-up. The district will explore the possibility of another event this spring. District 39's Community Review Committee has selected diversity and inclusion as its 2016-17 focus and many administrators and teachers are active members of the two subcommittees in our personal relationships and safety. Each subcommittee is reviewing District 39 practices and preparing to gather information from parents as well as learn from other districts' practices. CRC representatives will present a full report in May. The administrators have worked collaboratively on establishing a consistent practice of behavior tracking. And next year, EduClima, a data warehouse, will provide a common location to tracking behavior district-wide. In addition, it has the capability of producing data reports that are geared to graphically show trends within a school and/or across the district, which will be helpful in our analysis.
We feel there's a need to better develop empathy, instill respect, and promote acceptance within our elementary school communities to help lay the foundation of expectations with our youngest students. As a result, there are many actions and activities that we have developed in all of our schools to promote a culture of empathy. For one, we supplemented the current second-step curriculum with an additional unit that specifically addresses bullying and bullying prevention. All staff members have been trained about anti-bullying practices as well as Aaron's Law. Aaron's Law presentations were successfully delivered at all elementary schools this winter. We are continuing to use the Rush Social Emotional Screener in all 2nd grade classrooms district-wide to identify district-wide to identify any students who may need help with peer relationships. Intervention programs such as Zona Regulation are used to help students learn how to regulate their own behaviors and emotions. And we are revising our discipline procedures to have meaningful consequences to behavior with restorative practices that include student reflection forms. While there are obvious similarities among our schools, as seen in the previous slide, here we want to share some unique highlights from each of our buildings with you as well. At Central, each year, we celebrate a school-wide book with our One Book, One Central program. This year, our theme is kindness, and the title of our book is Ordinary Mary's Extraordinary Deed by Emily Pearson. We recently celebrated this book at our February All-School Student Assembly. Our sister school in Tanzania will also be receiving copies of the book so we can have a larger global book exchange on kindness and empathy across countries and cultures. Our classrooms are also conducting community circles. Guidelines and expectations for a classroom community circle are set by students to foster an open community of sharing and respect for diverse opinions and perspectives within a classroom. Students have an opportunity to respond to a question by taking turns using a handheld talking piece. At Harper School, the PTO provided an Artist in Residence program on mindfulness this school year. Staff received a workshop on how to incorporate applicable activities within the classroom, and students received mindful activities and trainings twice a month for four months. In the fall, students led a building assembly on disability awareness. Fellow students and family members co-presented. Finally, a recess plan is shown. This thoughtful completion process facilitates social-emotional learning. At McKenzie School, students have been taught what kindness might look like and sound like as a way of empowering them to demonstrate it on a daily basis. Through role-playing lessons in the classroom, students take action in real time when it counts. The PTA's Disability Awareness Committee created a Random Acts of Kindness Bulletin Board to support this. As students self-reported times in which they demonstrated kindness, they placed a smiley face on the lobby bulletin board. The buddy bench at McKenzie, built by a McKenzie alum, fosters social inclusion on the playground. A student who is feeling isolated or alone can sit on the bench and is then approached by other students who invite him or her to join their game. The empowering tool teaches students how to self-advocate and how to recognize an opportunity to demonstrate kindness, working toward the goal of making recess an enjoyable time for all students. Finally, at Ramona School, they're focusing on diversity with both staff and students. At Ramona Rock's Assembly on Originality, the EC through 4th graders read "The Cranbox That Talked" by Shane DeWolff and celebrated the things that make each of us unique. This winter, many staff members are participating in a book club reading "Whistling Vivaldi: How Stereotypes Affect Us and What We Can Do" by Claude M. Steele, leading to a productive discussion on how the Ramona staff can support their students better. And now Kelly Jackson will discuss her 5'8" community.
As a result of incidents that happened in our community last year and previous years, we felt the need as a staff to begin to focus on school climate, our interpersonal relationships, and the role that empathy, diversity, and inclusion play in those relationships. In fact, last year, as a part of our 5'8" Professional Development Day in April, we came together as a campus to start the process of having conversations about diversity, including diversity of race, religion, and gender. This year, our 5'8" campus adopted the theme of "One Campus Connected Community." This theme encompasses the work we are doing to improve school climate across the campus by developing consistency in our practices and making connections throughout our community between students, staff, and families. Quarterly communication updates on this theme are planned to communicate our progress towards this goal to families across the campus, and we are having regular discussions about consistency, diversity, inclusion, and developing empathy at staff meetings. We will update the board next month on our efforts to this end. Tonight, I want to share some highlights from the work that we have done across the campus in addition to our theme to support our students in the development of empathy, kindness, and inclusive behaviors. Beginning last summer and in continuing into the school year, administrative staff participated in training to better understand restorative practices and to work on plans to implement them. Restorative practice involves keeping relationships as a focus when rebuilding damage done to the community due to incidents such as bullying or physical aggression. And it also involves providing support for all parties involved. As a result of this training, we work as a 5'8" team to discuss such incidents, and we work with students to mend relationships, repair trust, and to make amends in the face of conflict. We have amended our student handbooks to include information about restorative practices and are working with on building staff capacity in this area. This spring, we will be reviewing and revising our student accountability system at both schools, otherwise known as the Merit and DeMerit System. And we will be continuing the process of developing a consistent and aligned school-wide behavior system across the 5'8" campus. Doing this will help us increase parents' and student understanding about expectations for behaviors and our responses to misbehavior, and it will help us to implement also more positive supports 5'8". Our October 31st half-day activities were devoted this year to connecting through kindness. And we were fortunate to work with the PTO Ignite enrichment teams at both schools to make this happen. At Willmet Junior High, students were inspired by Victor Pacini, a motivational speaker who specializes in working with students on goal-setting, learning about the importance of kindness, and preventing bullying behaviors through building confidence and self-esteem. Following his presentation, students attended cross-grade-level breakout sessions where they connected with students in different grade levels and learned more about their peers by finding commonalities. Students discussed kindness and received kindness cards, such as the one on the screen, to help pass on small acts of kindness across the campus. Students also created squares for kindness quilts that were then eventually sent to the elementary schools. You can see a group of students with their kindness quilt -- I think those students are from Ramona -- that had been delivered to their classroom. Students at Highcrest also created squares for kindness quilts and received kind cards to keep kind acts going across our campus. Some classrooms at Highcrest have maintained their connections, in fact, with their buddies, and they've increased their communication throughout the school year. At Highcrest, students that day also benefited from a presentation about community and the value of small acts of kindness from Greg Siegmann, who was the founder of the 111002 Foundation and a recipient of the Jefferson Award for Public Service. It was a great day had by all. In November, we continued the theme of kindness, and we created opportunities for students to build each other up by filling buckets. And you'll see a picture on the screen of one of our buckets. It's actually much more full now. Students fill each other's buckets by writing kind words on a drop, something to build somebody up in the community, and then we posted them on bulletin boards, and this took place at both schools. Included in November with this continuance of kindness were announcements on -- the morning announcements reflecting on inclusion and acceptance of others in our community. Earlier this year, six staff members from Highcrest and Willmet Junior High participated in the Beyond Diversity Seminar hosted at NewTrier, which is a two-day workshop aimed at giving participants the opportunity to enter into courageous conversations about race and improve relationships across the school community. Additional staff members also attended a workshop called "Confronting Bias: Facing Difficult Conversations in the Classroom," held at the Illinois Holocaust Museum and Education Center and hosted by Teaching Tolerance. This workshop gave participants suggestions for lesson plans and strategies to use in the classroom and also introduced us to standards created for social justice for students across K-8 classrooms. Our equity teams will be taking a deeper dive into these standards in the coming months. Speaking of equity teams, both schools have formed equity teams who are looking forward to their first joint meeting. We've been meeting separately up till this point, so we're meeting next week as a joint team. Together, the teams have explored different themes with respect to equity, diversity, and inclusion, and are currently drafting an equity statement to be presented to the board next month. As we've been reading and learning more about empathy, we've also found that there's a direct correlation between empathy and mindfulness. In March, we are going to beginning in a couple days, Mindful March Celebration across our campus, where we'll have regular mindful moments on the announcements. We'll be working together as a staff to learn the importance of mindfulness and learn new strategies to adopt mindful activities in our classrooms. Finally, we are planning for this year's April Professional Development Day, a year after last year's kickoff of talking about empathy, and we're looking forward to having staff continue these discussions around the topics of empathy, diversity, inclusion, mindfulness, resilience, and stress. Each discussion will be supported by books and supplemental materials. Some of the books that we will use to support these discussions include "Whistling Vivaldi", which is also being read at Ramona, "Empathy: Why It Matters and How to Get It," and "The Power of Resilience" by Robert Brooks. We are looking forward to our day in April to celebrate again and enter into discussions as a staff.
Thank you. Prior to the full strategic plan review in June, administrators will reflect on all that we've learned and all the efforts that we've shared with you tonight. And, you know, in addition, we know that the CRC work will help contribute and assist us in determining a more cohesive, sustainable approach on how we can continue this multi-year initiative. We are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members, do we have any questions, comments?
I have some questions. Number nine on this -- on the report, the written report of things that have been happening type list throughout the district, I just wanted to know, it says, "Principal, psychologist, and/or social workers in-service teachers on District 39's bullying policy and the difference between social conflict and bullying." Can you give me an example of social conflict and an example of bullying? Like, just to see what that difference was? Do you have any? Go ahead.
Sure, right, yeah. The social -- the definition of a social conflict would be atypical, age-appropriate interaction among students. Bullying would be the continued repetitive harmful interaction among students. Anyone want to add to that? Was that okay? Oh.
I think when we're working with students, we do use the definition that the board has put out in board policy for bullying. And really, we look at the threshold of it being pervasive, a pervasive action or that could be, you know, have the predicted effect on a student of not doing well in school or having continued self-esteem, issues where they're consistently troubled by the bullying action that has taken place. It may be a one-time situation, or it may be a habitual action, as Katie said. Social conflict, well, first of all, bullying has a lot to do with intent. So, is it intentionally a mean action that you are doing towards somebody else to intentionally hurt them? Whereas, social conflict is that normal kind of peer-to-peer back-and-forth that happens among students, and we know what happens. But a lot of times, the intent is less about being mean, and we find it being joking to start, and then it turns into something that might be a little bit more.
So, are we working on teasing out the definitions? A, because you should know the difference, but B, are they addressed differently then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And is, once those are then, is it that we're going to go back, or you are, or whatever, and look at the practice? Does it look like the policies in place are appropriate, but maybe the practices in place need review, or?
Right, and we take every incident on an individual basis, and we do look at the threshold that's outlined in the board policy for bullying, and we have to make a determination whether it's bullying, whether the intent's there, and that comes through interviews and a lot of processes, talking to all of the kids involved and involving other personnel at school, maybe a social worker or something like that. And then, you know, as far as practices go, we have instituted and implemented the restorative practices this year. So, that's been a change that we are still continuing to learn about, but it's something that we, as an administrative team, talk about on a regular basis, about what does restorative mean? How do we talk about repairing relationships as opposed to just an if/then type of situation? So, that's why we have to take everything on an individual basis and really evaluate what the appropriate follow-up is.
Thank you. There was the EduClimer database that you referred to. So, what kind of information does that give? What is it going to be providing?
So, basically--
I know behavior tracking, it said, but like, to what degree is there, like?
Well, last year, we found out that our current data warehouse in form was expiring. So, we need to shop around and find one that would replace that so that we could have all of our assessment data and what we typically keep longitudinally in one place. And we found that this particular one, the reason it was most appealing, was because it had this additional feature of being able to track behaviors. So, what it will do, it will provide a consistent protocol of how to record these incidences, and we would then be able to have data over time stored in one place. It really is just a tool for us to use.
What do you do with that data? I mean--
Well, what we want to do is see if there are any trends or patterns that are occurring. What we could do is find, you know, by grade level or by a particular, you know, group of students, that kind of thing. Because I think that will help us then use that information to adjust any of our practices and maybe make some efforts and things that we may have not have noticed when we think of each one individually. When we see a pattern or a trend, we can start those restorative--
So, trends in relation to possibly gender or just different groups of behave -- like, types of people's behavior?
Sure, it could be grade level. We don't -- we can't predict what the trends or patterns would be--
Right, but those are--
But those would be how we can tease it out, yes.
And then, finally, just one more. Can you define, I'm having trouble, equity team? The word equity in all of this. I know you said an equity statement is being worked on, but you have to have some idea of what--
Yeah, so equity, at its root, talks about being equal and having equal opportunities. I wish I had a visual here because it's much better done in a visual, but it be -- you know, a long time, we talked about equality and, you know, separate but equal types of conversations where, you know, each classroom looked the same, so every classroom is an equal classroom. And now, it's more about equity and having equitable opportunities, so having full access to a curriculum. So, all students, no matter what ability, they have equity in access to a full general ed curriculum at whatever point with the supports in place to build them up where they need to be built up, for example. So, my visual has different--
I get the visual. I guess, like, how is that different from what happens now? I mean, I feel like all our students have--
I think it's--
-- equitable opportunity--
I think it's about being intentional and about actually saying what we believe. And I think we do believe it's there, but it's making sure that we are stating our philosophy and our practices that way.
Okay.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments from board members? Cindy?
I was just going to ask or just request that when you share the final report in June, that you clarify the intended outcomes of this work?
Yes.
So, whether it's EduClimer is the baseline, and you're looking for, you know, changes there, or if this relates to kind of the student attendance or reports of bullying, but what the, you know, intended outcome is. And I guess the question would be if it's decreasing some of the negative behaviors or if there's any positive out, you know, like positively oriented outcomes that you're looking for, too.
Okay, thank you, yes.
Great, thank you very much. So, our next report is school attendance.
Yes, the goal of obtaining 80% positive attendance rate will be met by the end of the 2017-18 school year. As of February 3rd, we are at 74% of students being in attendance, at least 95% of the total number of school days, meeting the definition of positive attendance. This is an increase from the baseline of 71%. We continue to monitor attendance monthly, send reports home to parents, and have conversations with parents of students with chronic absences. And these guys have this report.
Hi, and now we'll present an update on this. During this first year of the new strategic initiative, District 39 has focused on proactive measures by engaging stakeholders and learning about the potential impact of school attendance and possible causes that influence student attendance by the following things. Increasing parent awareness of the importance of positive attendance, monitoring and tracking tardiness and attendance data on a monthly basis, working with parents to address any concerns related to excessive absences, providing teachers and other school personnel with training on recognizing and addressing school anxiety and avoidance, implementing interventions for students who may be considered at-risk or chronically absent, and reviewing our current practices and develop plans to create a school climate that is safe, positive, and consistent with a culture of empathy. So, we believe these efforts will develop increased awareness of all our stakeholders and promote that positive school attendance within each school community. Dr. Thrasher and Dr. DeChristofaro will-- Dr. Thrasher and Dr. DeChristophero will share further details on our efforts.
We can look at attendance the same way we view academic and social-emotional growth using the response to intervention triangle. A large majority of our students fall in Tier One, represented by the green shading. The yellow represents Tier Two, and a small percentage in the red is Tier Three. Students in Tier One demonstrate positive attendance. This is attending school ninety-five percent or more of their school days. Over a school year, that equates to fewer than nine absences. Students falling in Tier Two are considered at-risk. At-risk students are absent between five to nine percent of the school days, which is missing anywhere from nine to seventeen and a half days of this school year. Students in Tier Three are considered chronically absent. These are students that are missing ten percent or more of the school days. That is being absent eighteen or more days. Student absences accumulate regardless of the reasons. Students that are ill, have medical appointments, or are traveling are all missing schools. Research on attendance tells us that the excessive absences for any reason are shown to impact school performance and may lead to future school avoidance. Looking at the chart, we are trending ahead of last year with more students with positive attendance and fewer students in the at-risk or chronic categories. Although not a significant difference percentage-wise, this makes us cautiously optimistic that our efforts are working. In March 2016, we had two-hundred-and-ninety students who were chronically absent. On our February 3rd data collection, it indicated that we have one-hundred-and-ninety-nine students chronically absent, which is ninety-one fewer students in the chronically category than last year around this same time. We're using the three-pronged approach to address attendance. Efforts are made to inform parents of the importance of strong attendance practices through the webpage, monthly reports, and sharing of articles. At school, we are monitoring attendance, investigating reasons, and intervening early. We also have had parent and teacher trainings and ongoing discussion about attendance, school avoidance, anxiety, homework practices, attendance trends, warning signs, and individual student support planning.
Using a similar approach to response to intervention, targeted activities and actions are connected to the tiers and level of need. At Tier One, we are sharing information and promoting learning by sending home monthly attendance reports and thoughts about positive school attendance. In schools, we are concentrating on developing classroom and school communities, using second-step curriculum to develop school-related behaviors and practicing mindfulness techniques. Students in Tier Two are offered more directed interventions and supports. In Tier Three, we will be using a school avoidance assessment in the spring to analyze the functions of absences. We increase parental partnerships for these students that might result in home visits or an attendance contract. Chronic absences might trigger child find responsibilities to investigate if a student might need ongoing support through special education and an IEP, or accommodations through a 504 plan. Over the next two to three months, we will be reviewing attendance patterns and collecting information to determine the function of chronic absences using a school avoidance assessment tool promoted by Dr. Christopher Kearney from the University of Nevada. There are four functions of school avoidance. The first two functions are more school-based, while the second two functions are more home-based. Because the second two functions are difficult for the schools to address, we have emphasized increasing parent awareness and education on this topic as part of our plan. A better understanding of the root and function of the chronic absences will help us tailor our interventions appropriately. We will also continue with training and parent communication. Our work will continue, and the board may expect a full strategic plan review in June.
We are happy to answer any questions you may have regarding school climate and school attendance. Okay, board, do we have any questions? Frank?
Thank you for the report. It's great to see progress being made. Is, do you have any Pareto information on why students are missing school, or, you know, in the different categories, if there's any trends? I mean, there's a, you had a list of different reasons why students could be missing school, but do you have any breakout, or have you been able to collect any of that information so far?
That was our plan for the spring. Last year, when we looked at our chronic absences, we kind of looked at it more broadly, at just who we might have suspected had anxiety, and now we wanna take it a step further and break it down into those four categories.
Good, okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question about those four categories? Can you bring that? I completely understand what one through four means. How, what is your plan on going about, to go about determining which of those four, if they fall into, anyone falls into those four categories? And then what are you gonna do about it?
So we have the school, the school refusal assessment. I think the plan would be to identify all of our students on our chronic absent list, and then from there, we would work with nurses, principals, social workers to kind of discern, okay, were these absences because they were vacationing, or, you know, in the hospital?
Right, but let's say we move beyond that, yeah.
And then have our social workers and teachers work together. It may involve a child interview, that's part of the assessment, or a parent interview.
Have we looked at, I understand, in the June report of last year is when this first kind of came to a head, or at least I recognized it, in the report, and that we had seen a trend of chronic absences in the top red of the peak, increase over the last four years, essentially going from four percent to nine percent, from whatever the beginning-year marker was. And has there been any look at our practices within the district that have changed in those last four years? Specifically, curriculum changes, demands on children, I mean, technology integration? Has anyone, is there any thought to looking at maybe, with all the changes that have occurred in the last four years, that maybe some more support needs to be implemented in the classroom for the children? I don't know, be it smaller class sizes, or more, and, I mean, is, is that being looked at? Or is it just an entire, from what I've noticed that's changed from this year to last year is we're getting notes home now about how if our kids have been absent, and where they fall on that absence chart, et cetera. And I understand that that's an education too, and could possibly be part of it, but things have changed.
That is true, but also, what you might not be seeing is things that are done on the school level. You know, we're, we are introducing some of those interventions with the greets and the, and the peer buddies, and truly trying to impact relationships and making students feel comfortable to combat some of the anxiety. Once we go through this, using this assessment tool, and we're able to break down the function, we'll have a better look at what that, those reasons might be, and if they are in the avoidance anxiety based on schoolwork and presentations, or is it because, you know, they're trying to escape a social situation where maybe they're in a conflict? Once we get that information and break it down, we'll have better data to share with you.
I only bring it up because I assume previously in life, there were social situations the kids want to avoid, et cetera, so I don't see, but, I mean, there was a significant jump from four to nine percent, and, and I would imagine that it's just not all social situations. And, you know, that hasn't been the only case.
Yes, you've brought this to our attention, and I, I have to acknowledge that there's been a lot that has come about with our schools, with the changes, and some new wonderful initiatives have started. Right, but that's something to reflect on. I think one effort that has begun that will help and start to increase is the collaborative nature and the time that the teachers will have in order to meet together, talk about their homework practices, to become more consistent in discussing what actually happens in their classroom, and having those, that dialogue, I think is one of our first steps. I believe it's going to be challenging to figure out if, you know, was it our one-to-one iPad, you know, or device program that contributed to this? But I think holistically, we would need to sit back and reflect on, on that, and to see whether that contributes in any vein to anxiety.
And even the rigor of the curriculum could be, I mean, that's-
Absolutely, mhm, and I think that teacher collaboration and dialogue, that, that really is going to help increasing that, having opportunities for that, sharing those, that information across experiences for students, that would really be helpful in, in at least a step toward addressing what you are bringing up.
Thank you.
Other board members? Yep, Mark.
We've had the, we have the hypothesis that, and there's national research to show that early age absences lead to a higher likelihood of late age. Have we looked at all at our actual data to say, are the kids who are more likely, or the kids who are chronically absent in later ages, six years before, were they more likely to be absent?
We haven't gone that far back, but we have looked at the past two years of data, and we can say that students who were on the chronic absent list the year before were a lot more likely to be on the chronic absent list the next year.
And that's across?
Yeah, but we've only gone back for two years.
And that's across all grades, or is that just at the higher grades?
It was higher at 5'8" than it was at elementary, but yes.
Okay. So there are a number of kids in 5'8" who are chronically absent, who were not chronically absent in the earlier ages?
I don't know, I didn't go back that far, just the previous year.
But if there's more at 5'8" than there were at K4, then that would be our guess.
So for example, if there's an eighth grader right now who was on the chronic absent list last year, he's more likely to be on the chronic absent list this year, but I don't know about kindergarten, because we don't go that far. But we could look at some of that data in the future.
But the report did say that chronic absences increase with age?
Well, or that it's more likely that you'd be chronically absent if you were at a younger age.
But the actual number showed fifty-four percent or something in K through four, then seventy-four percent at W, at HMS, and then eighty-four percent of chronic absences. And that was WJHS was so it-
I, I feel like an advertisement for EduClimer right now, but what is nice about that, that data warehouse is going to be, all of this past information could be uploaded. We had hopes that Inform can do that for us. We know that EduClimer will do that for us. It's difficult to go line by line with students to try to track, I mean, the, it's time-consuming, to be very honest. But with this, we'll have that instant trend and graph available. So I'm excited to showcase it to you next year.
So I, I just have one question. With notes going home to parents and communication with parents, awareness building in that regard, have you had any, how are our parents reacting to that? Have you had any positive feedback, negative feedback?
Yes, we've had positive feedback, and I, I don't get that many emails after each of those are released, about five a month, and asking for clarification questions, which helps guide me for the next month then. It's like, oh yeah, that would be good if, if we let the parents know that. Or parents are wanting clarification, and just verification of the days that their children have been absent. So we've had, principals have received some as well.
Great, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Okay, great, thank you very much. So on to our third report, is the revised K4 school day schedule. Dr. Lechner?
Yes, the K4 Scheduling Committee was established as a result of the new WEA contract. The report reflects recommendations for changes to the K4 schedule that reflect best practices, as well as priorities for District 39. The recommended changes support both student learning, as well as improvement opportunities for teachers to collaborate, plan, and instruct. Dr. Glawacki and the Scheduling Committee have this report.
Thank you very much. We have some of our committee here tonight. Anne Rhodas is a teacher at Central, and she was, she's our only teacher representative, but we had a full committee of teachers and administrators. So thank you, Anne, for being here. The purpose of the committee was to have teachers and administrators work together to improve the K4 schedule. The committee consisted of two teachers from each school, as well as building and district-level administration. And we thank you for letting us have the opportunity to share our recommendations and represent our committee's work tonight. Dr. Kik?
The committee met for the first time before winter break, and during the first committee meeting, a scheduling consultant who also consulted with administrators last school year, met with the committee to talk about the strengths and challenges of our current schedule. There were few strengths, as you can note on this, of the current schedules. Notably, most were that students currently have morning and afternoon specials, and students in grades one through four have daily Spanish instruction. There were many challenges, however. Currently, the schedule is determined by when the specials classes need to occur, and the availability of specials teachers who travel between multiple buildings. As a result, core instructional blocks are then broken up by the need of the students to attend the specials classes. So for example, you could be in the middle of English Language Arts and then need to go to Spanish to come back to English Language Arts, to then go to PE. Teachers at the K4 level do not have consistent planning time with their grade-level teachers. So for example, in one grade level, there might be one to two teachers who might have a common planning time, but for all four, or five, or six, or seven teachers, it's rare that that occurs. As a result, many teachers are meeting to plan during their lunchtime, or before, after school, since they don't have that common planning time within their school day. Kindergarten through fourth-grade teachers are provided four half-day collaborations throughout the school year. This allows for the entire grade level as an extended period of time to plan. However, this collaboration time, as you know, falls and is currently designed to fall during the school day, requiring substitutes and taking classroom teachers out of their classrooms and away from students. We also talked about the limited cafeteria in gym space resulting in certain limitations to the overall schedule.
We quick, we quickly, quickly realized we cannot address all aspects of a desired schedule. As a result, we identified seven priorities we believe teachers would like to see improved in the new schedule. We asked the elementary WEA staff to rank order these seven priorities. They are listed on this slide and are presented in rank order. These results helped the committee to identify and incorporate top priorities within the revised schedule. The committee was able to address the top four priorities by adding twenty minutes to the student instructional day.
By creating a schedule with uninterrupted blocks of time for core instruction, specials classes were strategically scheduled so as not to occur during math or English Language Arts instruction. Both students and teachers benefit from morning and afternoon planning time. When classroom teachers have planning time, students are attending specials classes such as music, art, PE, et cetera. By scheduling specials classes in the AM and PM, both students and teachers will benefit. Currently, classroom teachers are responsible for, for providing students who are struggling with interventions. However, there is not a dedicated time within the schedule for interventions now. The committee created a schedule where each grade level has a half hour each day for intervention. We still have to work out and determine the details by defining who and how will be providing support to students during this time. However, it is our hope that all students, even those who are excelling, will be able to receive support for their enriched learning during this intervention block. By scheduling specials at the same time each day for grade-level classes, classroom teachers will have planning time at the same time. Currently, this does not happen. By having common planning time each day, opportunities for collaborating and lesson planning at each grade level are possible. Finally, the committee recognized the benefit of weekly early release for students, and was able to develop a schedule that allowed for this. And now Katie will talk about that.
The committee recommends Thursday as the early release for students. Thursdays allow teachers to consider student progress through the current week while discussing lessons for the week ahead. And currently, classroom teachers receive four half-days of release time from their classrooms for the purpose of collaboration. And this requires substitutes as teachers are away from their students. With weekly early release, this collaboration time would now be outside of the student day. This increases the amount of time students have with teachers by twelve hours during the year, and reduces the need and cost of daily substitutes. Also, weekly early release time will provide opportunities for professional development for teachers provided by the Department of Curriculum and Instruction. This will again reduce the amount of time teachers need to be away from the students while still receiving necessary opportunities for curriculum development and much-needed discussions. Much of the twenty minutes that is added to the school day, even with the weekly early release for students, there is a net increase of forty instructional minutes per week for grades, for students- there is a net increase of forty instructional minutes per week for grades, for students in grades one through four.
Change to Spanish delivery model became necessary in order to accomplish the scheduling goals, mainly because we needed consistent instructional blocks of time. Currently, the master schedules run on twenty, thirty, and sixty-minute increments. P E and Spanish were the only two classes operating in twenty-minute increments. Because of state requirements, the committee did not adjust the amount of time dedicated for P E. However, there was an opportunity to schedule Spanish in thirty-minute increments. Spanish will be three times per week, thirty minutes per class. Administration will be working with the elementary Spanish team in order to determine the impact of this change to the Spanish program over time. All specials besides P E will now be within one sixty-minute specials block for each grade level. Currently, many Spanish and P E teachers travel from school to school to provide instruction. The proposed new schedule will eliminate this need.
The committee recognized the need to look at kindergarten differently from grades one through four because of the unique half-day structure. Their new schedule does not change the special schedule for kindergarten students. Both A M and P M classes will have an early release on Thursdays. This is crucial for planning and equitable instruction across both morning and afternoon classes. Again, even with a weekly early release, kindergarten students will experience a net increase of fifteen minutes of instruction each week.
In considering the E C schedule, the kindergarten schedule was used as a model. The attempt was to increase at the same level as kindergarten, which presented a challenge for the four-day-a-week P M class as a bus schedule for all E C students needed to be consistent. Both morning and afternoon classes on Thursday will have a shortened schedule. Depending on whether the E C classes are meeting in the A M or P M and whether sessions are four days or five days, will determine the increase in the student instructional time. All students in E C will receive an instructional time increase.
Essentially, the committee worked to create scheduling templates for each school that embedded the top four scheduling priorities. Each schedule has the ability to accommodate four sections of kindergarten and five sections at each grade level, first through fourth. While there are not exact times on this schedule, each column represents thirty-minute increments. As you can see, there is a ninety-minute block for English Language Arts, or E L A, and sixty minutes for math daily. The S blocks are for specials, the I blocks represent intervention block. And you will notice that there's a sixty-minute block of P E, social studies, and science. Within that sixty-minute block, twenty minutes will be dedicated to P E, while the other forty will be for science and/or social studies. There may be some grade levels that only have four classes. When this occurs, there will be more room and flexibility within the schedule. If more sections are needed at any one grade level, some of the priorities may not be able to be addressed. However, we don't anticipate going above five sections at any one grade level very often or in the foreseeable future. For schools that have more of a staggered lunch, the classes shift a bit. However, the same template with identified priorities was established.
So we still have some work to do. At each school, we will be finalizing a detailed schedule to incorporate all of these priorities. The staff, along with administration, will engage in discussion about the intervention block. Implementation of this schedule will require reflection and the scheduling committee will continue next year. It is expected that the committee will need to consider possible tweaks and slight changes to the schedule that we've developed for this next school year for implementation in its second year. At this time, we'll take any questions you have.
Board members, do we have any questions? Comments?
I have a comment.
Yes.
Coupled with a question maybe. First of all, I just want to say I think this is a very good start to providing answers or, or meeting, or whatever, compromising on a lot of things that constituents have been asking for. But back to you, Dr. Lechner. It was a year ago, I think February, this meeting, that we went over those four different options, where we had chunks of, if this were our goal, if this were our goal, if this were our goal, and we realized we couldn't meet any of those criteria and talked about how we prioritize. This, I think, is the beginning of that prioritizing, correct? But I have continued to hear and I think, and I think the next step is, I don't want, whether this is accepted or not, to stop here and really do look at the whole band in the inner day situation because that does continue to seem to be a frustration. I know this has nothing to do with K through four right now, okay, but yes. Okay. I wasn't, I didn't realize, okay, thank you. Okay, perfect.
Okay, any other comments? Cindy?
I guess I just had a question about how to think about the Spanish piece. Because if I, if I, right, it's ten percent fewer minutes, is that correct?
Ten minutes, yep, ten percent.
Right, so, right, but ten a week across however much. And so when you say that you're going to be looking at the implications of that, so what does that mean? And, and I guess that's really my question, like what are the implications of it? But then I was curious in terms of the prioritization. If you stopped at four because trying to also do five made it impossible logistically to do, or it didn't get enough points in order to warrant, like trying to do that, or so, I guess a two-part?
Two-part question, and it, it wasn't about not getting enough points. We would have liked to have been able to develop a schedule that had all seven priorities met because we think that they're all very important. It was a function of the logistics of the schedule and needing to move into thirty-minute blocks. Your question about continuing to look at the outcomes, if you will, of the, the new structure in delivering Spanish, I think, I know in talking with Spanish teachers and building principals and Katie, we, we don't know what, if any, impact this will have. And we don't want to assume that there will be none, so we want to be mindful of it as we approach it. We're hoping if, and there are any negative consequences to this, that they're minimal and we can work to come at those in a different way. But it, but it's something that we want to keep on our radar as we approach this.
Great, any other questions? I was just wondering if you could talk a minute about, on early release days, supervision for our students or providing supervision?
That's in the next report.
Is it in the next report, okay. Sorry, I'm ahead of myself too. Okay, let's go to the next report. Let's go to the next report, thanks you guys. The next report is our proposed school start and end times.
I get this one, it's the hardest one.
You get this one?
Yes, me. This report dovetails with the K four schedule presentation that you just received. For several years, the district has considered issues impacting school schedules. In fact, the twenty-fourteen-fifteen CRC report on this topic recommended this review. Here we are, two years later, and we have a proposal. I believe this report is a solid first step in solving many issues. This proposal is thoughtful as it addresses the needs of many, but it isn't perfect and it doesn't answer every concern, at least not this first step. My recommendation is for the board to have a plan to approve at the March meeting, and I will be personally soliciting feedback at parent and staff meetings that have already been scheduled. We're open to feedback that suggests improvements to this plan. I, I need to thank the entire administration, who for more than a year have been looking at ideas, options, and drafts. This proposal tonight is the latest hybrid that we are very excited to share. Here is a list of topics that we're going to be covering this evening. We'll be reviewing proposed changes, rationale for change, and impacts the proposed changes will have. This includes research on adolescent sleep needs, concerns about early band practice, issues with bus schedules, and long before, and long, and the long before-school wait time issues, especially at Highcrest, the need for more K four planning time, et cetera. Given a longer K four student day, it is now possible to address all of these concerns. Our goal tonight is to review a proposal that, that addresses much of what has been longstanding issues in District thirty-nine. This is my eighteenth year in the district and as we all know very well that the before-school wait time at Highcrest Middle School is very longstanding. I thought the first stop would be, what are our neighbors in the township doing right now? So let's look at that. Our K four schools have one of the shortest school days and also the, the latest start time. Hmm, we thought, could this information help us with junior high start times? Next, Highcrest, they too have one of the later start times and we could consider flipping Highcrest and the junior high, but then Highcrest also has the latest end times. That would interfere with junior high after-school sports and related activities. Next, grade seven and eight, no surprises here. Willmet Junior High School has, starts earlier than most of them, and we knew that. Even Nutture High School starts later than Willmet Junior High under the current model. Hmm, Nutture High School. The junior high starts earlier than most, yeah? Okay, so then let's look at the, the Nutture High School as we transition campus to their school next year. Now we have a little bit of research to quote or to look at. And I want to thank the CRC for giving us the information and pointing out, point us along the way. As you can see there, the A M A suggests eight-thirty A M for the junior high. Dr. Sousis suggests that younger elementary kids could start as early as seven A M. Wow, seven A M, and that one is not going to fly. But earlier is definitely better. So our new elementary schedule, the work that our K four teachers did was simply amazing and you just had a chance to hear about those changes already. And again, I need to thank the teachers and the administrators for their collaboration because their work will clearly improve instruction and we have more instructional time for K four students. However, these changes opened a door. Indeed, a longer school day at one level required the superintendent to look at start and end times at every school. As this door opened, there was great excitement, at least in my office. Okay, so you heard about this. This was an established best practice by many schools and that's the weekly early release. Winetka has been doing this for years, for many years, and they support and reinforce the benefits of a, a once-a-week early release. But don't panic yet, there's more information about early release. Thursday, weekly early release. It only impacts the elementary schools, where we have more instructional time for kids than we did last year, even with the early release. We're working with the Park District right now and have preliminary plans that will be seamless for working parents. Buses will be leaving early on Thursday and our colleagues tell us that once families adjust to this weekly early release, it becomes simply part of a normal schedule. However, during transfer, during transition, we can offer one hour of student supervision if it's needed. You've heard about the longer K four day, but here is yet another benefit. Right now, K four teachers have collaboration days four times a year. On these days, substitutes are hired to teach students. This adds up to twelve more hours of classroom teacher having direct contact with their own students. That's seven hundred and twenty minutes a year. And we get twenty-three thousand dollars worth of savings for not having to hire subs, and that's nothing to sneeze at either. So all of what we just shared led to the proposal that you see here. Note that we have three separate start times as our buses make three runs. Some have asked if the Highcrest and the junior high could start at the same time. Doubling our transportation cost was honestly not on the table. Note that we added K four time. Now, the length of our school days are similar across all schools and that really helped with busing. And what about our wait times? Gone. And the express pilot's bus that we're doing at Central School this year was a big hit, so we'll be surveying parents and expanding where feasible in the fall. And let's take a look at bus times, look at that. The wait time between drop-off and school starting is now only ten minutes at each school. It's important to note that bus runs involve, involving Highcrest and the junior high need to be thirty-five minutes because those schools have served the entire community and they have longer runs that stretch across the village. Now we'll look at the kindergarten schedule, you heard a little bit about this already. This one's a little bit more complicated because we have A M and P M and early release for kindergarten to deal with as well. However, these students also will benefit from increased instructional time. The early release supervision for parents is still being sorted out, but we're continuing to collaborate nicely with the Park District. Band and orchestra, this too is a step in the right direction as the junior high band students will now be starting later. Note, orchestra has a home at Avoca and Avoca cannot change their start times, so these children will have to continue at, at the early A M time, at, at, at Avoca for their practice. However, District thirty-nine students will also have twenty-five minutes of additional time before school. We're working with Avoca and this could be an opportunity for before-school sectionals practice for these students. Now, we plan to survey parents next school year to see how these changes are working. As a reminder, band and orchestra right now are outside of the school day and they're considered enrichment programs. I know some parents want us to consider an option inside the school day. We, yes, we can definitely consider that again, but after we see how this initial step of changes that we're proposing work. Next, people are asking about Nutture Math. At the moment, I'm not anticipating any concern. Township superintendent scheduled this program annually based on enrollments. And because our new start times are now exactly aligned with Nutture High School, I anticipate this should be even easier than before. And our Park District programs, I have to say, we have had absolutely awesome collaboration with the Park District. We were sharing proposals with them quietly ahead of the public release of this and they were really instrumental in supporting this as it's happening and moving forward. So we're kind of excited about that. What about after-school activities? No changes in grades five through eight. However, K four will have to be realigned. And then what about before-school care? Still available. And with that, I can answer some questions.
Great, any questions from board members? Tracy?
I think it's going to be the question you're going to ask.
About what is F, what does supervision look like during early release? How do you envision that?
Yeah, so we have, the students have working parents that have, automatically have activities that happen after school, most of which are at the Park District. So we've already solved that, where the kids are going to be transported to the Park District for programs that will start earlier. So that's, that's covered. If we have some parents that, that, that are not availing themselves of community services and we, we have some opportunities for providing service, or coverage for an hour after school. So we have lots of support staff, we have lots of opportunities for that.
And from what I understand, or from what I read in the report, should someone who isn't using community services choose for their child to stay after school, the only responsibility that changes for them is they would have to pick their child up?
Correct, that is correct.
Or arrange for transportation?
They'd have to arrange for transportation, that's correct.
Otherwise, the child could take the school. The bus leaves early on that early release day.
That is exactly right.
Okay, great, Kimberly?
I know the elementary schools are using the Park District for after-school clubs.
Yes.
So would there be, is there an opportunity to simply have more after-school clubs on Thursdays?
Yeah, that's a possibility, that's, that's true that we have a-
I mean, if they were, you know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are clubs still coordinated through the P T A's and O's?
Those, well, those often are run through the Park District. There's a little bit of P T O involvement. Like, for example, there's an early morning choir at Harper. So if this gets approved, that program would have to switch.
Read that?
Yeah, that's, it's very unique, but Harper Elementary School has an early morning choir that's before school. So-
Okay, so in, just to clarify, when I was talking about after-school clubs, I'm not talking about after-school enrichment at the Park District, where the kids take the bus to the Park District. I'm talking about the clubs that Park District is now running on-site at each of the-
Correct.
-elementary schools after school.
Correct.
Whether it's a coding class or martial arts or whatever.
They were very confident they could move things up to a three o'clock start, they had no problem with that.
Well, it would be not a three-
I mean, hour.
It would be like a two o'clock start on Thursdays. And then the question is, with a two o'clock start on Thursdays, would they be able to offer more clubs, I guess? Because I would think people might want to avail themselves of that.
Yeah, that I'm not sure about. I know that we're working on that Thursday early release, but we seem pretty confident about, they didn't seem nervous about it.
But regardless, if they didn't want to join a club or whatever, there's-
There's going to be supervision, that's the, that's the key.
Constituents any more money.
Yes, yes, no charge, right. Unless there's a club that requires a fee.
But that's an option.
Right, that's an option, right?
Where you make a decision on your-
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, Cindy?
I just, this is just for, if you continue to use your document. I think when you talked about Nutcher's Northfield, you talked about the start time of classes, but advisory starts half an hour before that, so the kids actually are at school.
Got it, thank you for that.
Seven fifty-five, not eight twenty-five.
Got it, got it, thank you for that. I appreciate that.
But Nutcher East starts at 8:15, right? Yeah, so.
West?
West?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions?
One more thing.
Mark?
I just wanted to re-bring up my question that was brought up too soon in the last report.
Did I miss it?
No, it was just, you said we'll be talking about it in this report. Band, I think was the key word, the trigger word.
Right.
Anyway, it wasn't talked about in this. This is before and after school. This is school and start/end times. This is just a precursor, maybe could go into all, old business, sort of, of just reminding that we did say that we would continue, we'd start with prioritizing, getting our, you know, moving in the right direction, which I think we're doing with this report. But I don't think that puts aside or is going to, we still need to look at pulling out for sectionals during the day as I think that continues to be a frustration for parents whose children have been missing core classes.
Got it.
That's what I'm talking about.
Got it, I misunderstood.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, and I think that's a great thing about orchestra. Maybe we'd be able to do sectionals ahead of school because they still have to go pretty early.
It, I agree, and it takes care with orchestra, and I still don't understand, and I saw your responses to people. And I know you've even answered that question for me as well, and I don't know why, I can't remember what the answer is other than, like, why, why band cannot be a related arts option? And I know the answer is that, you've said that there have been many parents who have said they want both. They want to still be able to do photography, et cetera.
Yeah, I'm going to pull up the report that we did in 2015 to the school board where it shows the parent surveys.
Okay.
And that was, but we're going to resurvey parents again. I think we, I want to see how it works in the fall.
Right.
And then survey parents again and see what they're thinking.
I, I do want to say, I think everyone says it's with the best intentions, and that whole scheduling thing, it's supposed to alternate, and you're never supposed to miss, you know, more than three math classes or something. I have consistently heard that someone's missed 10 of their math classes. I mean, and again, unintentional, and maybe that's an outlier, but I don't think that it is as many times as it's brought up and discussed.
Okay.
So.
Back to sectionals, I get it.
Yes.
Okay, Mark?
A couple of comments. First of all, I think very few folks outside the administration and some of the board members realize how much work this was. And, and so I want to, you know, first say congratulations and thank you for, and to all the administrators too, because people don't realize this is an incredibly heavy lift. And the benefit that we're getting from it, I think, is multifaceted and material. That said, you know, I think what I'm hearing tonight and what I also believe is that, you know, we're not done.
No.
And I, I wanted to note one possible slip of the tongue, or, you know, slight backsliding. And so on the, on the early release, which at one point we weren't calling early release, but we're calling early release now, you know, in the presentation, there was a comment that other districts have found that after a transition period, you know, it works well. My concern is that we've talked to the administrators at other districts, and we haven't necessarily talked to the parents. I'd want to make sure that we are not making an assumption that the clear commitment we've made for next year on providing supervision for early revision, or excuse me, early release days on students who need to stay there, that commitment doesn't go away until we talk about it again and are really sure that that is an okay thing for our parent community.
Right. The, the ability to provide supervision will always be there. What I was told, and this is by even parents who are experiencing it in other districts now, is that ultimately, the, the feeling of the need for the supervision trickles slightly away over time.
And if that happens to us, that's fine.
Right.
But I want to make sure that we are sure that it is happening before we assume that we can change any of our, what we're providing.
That is correct.
Okay. The other thing is, and I'm echoing some of the other comments of board members here on band. I, I may be misremembering this, but I thought that administrators were working on some norms for extracurricular activities this year, and reports on how we would be thinking about outside-of-school activities. Am I misremembering something there, or are we still, are we doing something on that?
I don't remember that.
No, nothing if you.
Yeah, I don't remember that.
So, okay, that's, that's fine, then maybe I'm misremembering. So on band, I'm going to echo some of the comments, and, and I've made some of them to you before, so I'm just going to tell other board members as well. So right now, as we pull people out of sectionals, I am concerned that we're actually being inconsistent in our logic. On the one hand, we had a report tonight of, you know, trying, the efforts that we're making around positive attendance. We define positive attendance as attending 95% of the days. On sectionals, we are pulling kids out of class, if I'm, my, if memory serves, for kids who are in band, about 5% of the time for academic classes. And if they're in two bands, I think it's close to 10%. It might be 9% or 8%. That's, that's my recollection. So on some level, we are asking students to, we are enforcing a lack of positive attendance at the individual class level, obviously not at the school day level, through sectionals and band. So we need to be thinking carefully about whether that's appropriate, whether we're actually doing that, and how we should address that.
Got it.
I also think that as we think through some of these issues, we've done a great job of saying, let's align ourselves with some of the national medical recommendations on terms of start times. I don't, for my personal position, that's not quite enough. I think we should think seriously about whether we should have a practice of guidance to extracurricular activities that, under circumstances, they don't, under, except for certain exceptions, they do not go past certain times at night, and they don't start before certain times in the morning. We can figure out what those times are, but right now, we sometimes have concerts that go quite late at night or other events that go quite late at night on school nights, and then we're requiring the students to be there quite early in the morning. And I think as we have made this step forward, we should continue to follow all the way through and make sure we have a commitment to our students' health. Thanks.
Thanks, Mark. Kimberly?
All right, I'm going to bring up band again.
Okay.
So I know that there was a survey conducted in 2015. And my question is, I mean, my, my recollection is that I thought that the survey was very chopped up, and for this segment, they got these questions, and this segment, they got those questions. And it seemed like it could have been streamlined much better. And so my question, as far as you indicated wanting to do another survey, I'm wondering the timing for that and how you would be suggesting that the questions be formulated? Because I had some fairly big concerns about the last ones.
Okay. I was definitely looking at fall while the information was, you know, after the parents have had some experience. But if we're going to make a change by taking an enrichment program like band, for example, because I've been asked to look at this, and move it into the school day as a related art, that's a significant programming change, and we would need time to work on that schedule. So fall would be when we'd have to do it.
I understand that, quite frankly, it would be, I think, logistically impossible to implement it for fall 2017.
No, no, I meant the survey would be.
Oh, the survey, but yeah, to implement anything with respect to band would take much longer than that. I understand, yeah.
Yeah, but I would do a survey as early as fall of 2017 to see how it's going, and then to get feedback from parents. You think that's too soon?
No, I don't think it's too soon. I just want to, I would want to make sure that the survey, and I, I think, quite frankly, I believe that the questions can be pretty much the same for all parents in grades five, six, seven, and eight.
Yep.
Whether they're in band or not.
Yes.
And that they aren't diverted to other, you know, and termination of survey if they say, they give one answer.
Yep.
All right?
Yep.
I just have a clarification question. What makes band, and I'm asking genuinely, different, if, from what, chorus is five days a week and a related arts, correct? What makes band different than either that or even, like, wrestling after school?
Yeah, the fact that it's outside the school day makes it an enrichment program. Chorus was made a related arts because we couldn't get any students to join chorus. And a lot of them were in other activities outside the school day. So that was just a strategic choice that we, an option that we made to help bolster the chorus, and it worked, actually. It worked.
Okay, so is there a fear if we went that way with band that we would have, we would explode with capacity for band membership?
No, no, what would happen if we did that? And it's, again, it's totally fine that we do, but then our number of a related arts options would shrink significantly because all the kids would be, not all, many kids, the majority of the kids taking related arts would be picking band. So then we would have a smaller range of options. But that would be the survey would have to tell us that.
Got it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move on.
I just want to say, good point, Mark, on the attendance.
Okay, let's move on to our annual business reports. The first is summer 2017 construction project bids.
Yes, the planned construction projects for boiler roof and large space HVAC address most of our immediate needs. Bids came back, and at this time, we're recommending that we approve boiler replacement at the junior high. Another priority, as we talked about earlier, is to renovate library technology and media spaces at Ramona and Mackenzie next year. However, the initial bids came back significantly higher than estimated, so the architects were sent back to the drawing board to redesign the project so we can rebid in March. Gail Buscemi has this report.
I don't have much to add on the construction. We are, we're going out to bid on the roof project. We'll have that, the numbers in in March. The learning commons, we will not have back until April. But I wanted to mention that the companies that we are awarding the junior high boiler work to are the same companies that did the boiler and electric at Ramona two years ago. And the district was very happy with their work, so we're excited about moving forward on this project.
Great, any questions, comments, board members?
Gail, when do we expect to get the bid back for the learning commons?
Not until April.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the second report, regular student transportation contract for 2018 to 2020.
Yes, an invitation to bid for regular transportation services was made available to the public January 26, 2017. The district received bids from three companies. These bids were evaluated based on six criteria within a matrix. North Shore Transit is being recommended for board approval. North Shore Transit provided District 39 with the strongest proposal and continues to be the best fit for District 39. North Shore Transit decreased their per route cost by 13% from the current year. Gail Buscemi has this report.
So the school code allows for transportation bids to be awarded by first considering the bidders most able to provide safety and comfort for our pupils, stability of service, and factors set forth in the proposal regarding quality of service, and then price. Safety and comfort was the highest valued criteria in our matrix. Lack of timeliness in arrival at bus stops creates safety issues which are exacerbated by poor parent communications. North Shore Transit scored very high in this category of safety and comfort, while AI bus and all-town bus references indicated difficulties with being on time to bus stops and parent communications. AI bus and all-town references indicated that there appears to be a high driver turnover rate which carries the risk of having less experienced drivers with less training on a route and less opportunity to build necessary rapport with students for bus management. Communication with parents and staff is a very high priority with our district. A value was assigned to each of the criteria in the matrix, and North Shore Transit received the highest overall score. Once this score was determined, consideration of the cost factor was looked at. The cost factor did not change our assessment that North Shore Transit is the best vendor for our district based on all factors. North Shore Transit had the highest cost, however, they did decrease their per route cost by 13%, as Dr. Lekner indicated. They were able to do this based on economies of scale from increased business at their Skokie location. North Shore Transit has provided the district with the strongest proposal and is the best fit for our district and therefore our recommendation. Are there any questions?
Board members? John?
I recall we discussed this at the most recent school finance joint committee meeting. I think North Shore also offered to change the average age of the buses that we're using. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct. We asked for newer buses with an average age of five years, the oldest bus being 10.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Great, okay, thank you very much for your report. The next report is a revised special ed education workload plan.
Yes, in 2009, District 39 submitted its special education work plan to ISBE after board approval. This plan serves as a framework to evaluate special education personnel workload. The 2009 plan was reviewed recently, and revisions are suggested. The proposed plan provides more detail and examples of what's included in the four components. And through this review, a fifth component, crisis management and social-emotional duties, were added. The board will be voting to approve this revised plan later tonight. Dr. Thrasher has this report.
Using a survey that outlined a learning behavior specialist job responsibilities, the plan addressed considerations of the time spent on individualized instruction, consultive services and collaboration, attendance at IEP meetings and other meetings, and case management, paperwork, and reporting. Recently, the plan was reviewed with more specific responsibilities listed under each component. In addition, as Dr. Lekner mentioned, crisis management and social-emotional duties was added as a fifth component. The plan also now includes all special education staff instead of just learning behavior specialists. The workload plan framework is a tool that guides an analysis of someone's workload if there are worst concerns about their responsibilities. Are there any questions?
Board members?
I have a comment. First of all, when I read through this, I thought, I loved the definition, or defining between workload and caseload. That's something that's gone over my head, and that, that's huge. Secondly, obviously, I'm assuming that the special ed staff was involved in all of this?
Yes, we had a committee that, that drafted it, reviewed the, reviewed the old plan, looked at the new plan, then was reviewed also by the student, by the special education leadership, and was sent back to buildings by the representatives to review.
And they're in support of this? They've, they're happy about it? Because I know that.
Yes, they, they did a lot of the changes. They liked that it's more components, more descriptors were added, and that we added crisis management.
Perfect, and can I just ask something? I've always wondered, and I don't know if there's a direct, what is the typical caseload management for an LBS?
It depends on the need of students and the age. So our students with more comprehensive needs, we might have a teacher to five students.
Okay.
And then if you, a student that has just academic or maybe some small behavior needs at the elementary, it might be one teacher for seven or eight students. And then at the junior high, it increases. But at the junior high, for students that might have just one goal and be pretty independent, the caseload could get up to one teacher for 13 to 15 students.
From what I understand, that those are phenomenal ratios. Anyone, I've got teachers who have caseloads of 30 to 40 students. So that's, that's great, and I'm glad you said that too, that there is, I thought I read in here, it doesn't matter. It counted per person, per child, but didn't matter what the, you know, what the. what the, you know, what the significance of the support that was needed. And you just corrected that by saying it does matter how significant the needs are of the student.
Right, that goes into the workload?
Right. And the, okay, yep, thank you. I think this, it looked good to me. I just want to make sure the support staff, or the special ed staff liked it.
Any other comments? Thanks for your report. Okay, so now to board policy review, the first reading of many policies.
Yes. And we have the next set of policies for you this evening, and Dr. Glucki has this report.
Thanks. I'd like to take a few minutes just to highlight some of the recommended changes in this first read. The first one would be deletion of policy 7:265, which is also known as head lice. It does not mean that we are not continuing to address it and that it's something that isn't on our radar. It simply is not a required policy, and the Illinois Department of Public Health guides our practices and standards when students are recognized to have that. So that policy is recommended for deletion. I'd like to go through a few, one by one, and feel free to ask questions as we go. 7:240, the code of conduct for participants in extracurricular activities. There was a question, I believe, or a comment about whether or not there should be language related to concussions within this policy. There's a separate policy that talks directly to that, 7:305, that relates to extracurricular related concussion. So the, this policy in particular is focused solely on the code of conduct, behavior during extracurricular activities. I'd like to draw your attention to 7:275, which is a new policy recommended for adoption. And it's a tough topic. It's a topic on what parents who are facing decisions on, on what to do with their children who are terminally ill or have a medical situation where there might be advanced directives. And so the, the question was about how do we make this decision? How do, how do parents learn about it? And I think one thing to note is that when schools are made aware of families that are in this type of situation, there's a lot of communication that happens. Formal, informally, there's daily check-ins, and first and foremost, the school's working very closely with the family to make sure that we do everything as directed by them. And so there's often a meeting that occurs once the school's made aware of this type of situation, where we're meeting with doctors and, and the family to determine what our steps and process should be so that the children can come to school as long as possible and we can continue to honor their wishes. So that's the rationale for this type of policy. And then in 7:285, I believe there was a question as to whether or not we should be looking at linking this type of policy to our EpiPen policy or a policy that relates to the EpiPen. I think it talks about in, in number one, where we indicate treatment of symptoms, and for any one person, the treatment of how we deal with a life-threatening food allergy could be different. And so there's very detailed plans that each school nurse has and is made aware of to be able to direct staff in how to treat. And it could include an EpiPen, but it may not depending on each child. So that's just a brief highlight. Any questions about first policy?
Can I ask one question about the policy, which is 7 point, or 7:285?
Yes.
I think I read it correctly. If, if the parents give permission or there's a plan on, in place, a child is allowed to carry their own EpiPen?
There is a policy on that. That and inhalers.
Okay. And inhale, right. That we, we, we support that policy, correct?
That's always been our, our leading practice, actually.
Isn't it one of these policies?
It is. It's, um.
In the ca, in that case, does there still also have to be an EpiPen in the nurse's office? So, okay.
Yep, it's 7:270 where it talks specifically about a child's ability to carry those.
I saw, I read, okay.
And it's an opportunity to teach a child how to support their needs lifelong.
But we do definitely allow for that.
We have to.
Okay.
It's a requirement.
That's what I thought.
But not only do we allow it, we encourage it.
Right.
Because it's part of teaching children to be safe who have to live with this type of situation.
Got it.
Yep, John?
May I back up to 7:275? It's a tough one.
Yes.
I'm really asking more about how it would operate in this scenario. And I'm noting the language, in the event the child suffers a life-threatening episode, and I'm imagining that a school nurse or administrator might not know if an episode is life-threatening, in which case this, this directive would take effect. If there's an ambiguous situation, the school has a directive from the parents, but it might not be clear whether it's operative.
Sure.
And so, given that sort of confusing situation and high tension and stress, I, I imagine that EMTs might be called.
Yes.
They would come, and at some point, responsibility for adhering to the parents' directive would pass from the school district to the EMTs, right?
Correct. And we would have paperwork that would direct them, the EMTs.
So that handoff would be very clearly understood on all sides?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Cindy?
So going back to the EpiPen one.
Okay.
So when I'd asked the question about whether they should be connected, you made a suggestion that perhaps including a statement, you know, such as in accordance with policy 2:70 would make sense, and I'm just now raising that again since a couple of the questions that were then raised here around 285 went back to, you referred back to 270 to answer it. So I'm just, it seems like it might make sense to make the connection as you had suggested in your earlier suggestion about how to link them.
Look, I can certainly seek more clarification. I think my comment tonight was reflective of the fact that treatment for life-threatening allergies can, can include an EpiPen, but it could be much more detailed and include many other things, and an EpiPen could be the last result of that process. In other words, it could be an antihistamine, it could be an inhaler before we even got to that point, but it's all directed very clearly in each child's plan.
Okay. I, it still strikes me that those two policies are connected in some way, and whether it's the numbering of them that they're closer together, I don't know. It just, it seems like there's a connection to be made.
Okay. I think it's just when, if you have people looking at the policy and they see one, I mean, frankly, in some ways, it seems like they should be one. But, so I, maybe we're just talking organizationally. Is it worth it to say, to refer to the other one, so that?
I can do some more investigating for the next meeting.
Any other comments?
I have just one minor comment on 7:260, exemption from physical activity for either health reasons or religious reasons. The second paragraph talks about special activities will be provided. It only refers to students with physical or emotional reasons for not participating in physical education. Do you want to reference religious reasons in that paragraph, too? I can find out.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, let's move on to the third and final reading of revised Board of Education policy, 7:140.
Yes, we're bringing this one back again because the board members expressed concern about the soft language of, quote, "when feasible," end of quote, which is preceding language that guides the process for conducting a student search when it's being considered. And I just want to remind everybody that in all situations, district, district staff will preserve and protect the dignity and, dignity and rights of our students. At the same time, we have this other objective to keep all students as safe as possible. So the language guiding the search practice is important for the student as well as for staff. The, quote, "when feasible," end of quote clause allows for staff to make decisions and judgments to keep all students safe. And Dr. Glucki, is there anything to add to that?
No.
I just have a question. I know I had questions about why parents wouldn't be notified first, and you did reach out to the attorney, and she suggested that this was the way the language should read.
Yeah.
Can you, and I meant to write you back, and I, can you just tell me why she suggests that?
So there could be situations where the entire student population is at risk, and the need for doing a search.
Is immediate.
And there isn't time to make communications and, and inform parents that this is happening. So to put language in there could put all of our children at risk, and I think that goes back to what Dr. Lechner was saying in terms of we respect and, and our, keep our children as dignified as possible in, in an event where we might need to perform a student search.
Okay.
It's truly about safety, then, in that case, and it's about judgment and administrators' ability to make a sound judgment call.
Can it be added at, at, on this policy, under students, where it's underlined in that paragraph after the 1, 2, 3 bullet points, immediately following a search, a written report shall be made by the student, I'm sorry, by the school authority who conducted the search and given to the superintendent? Can there be some, and the child's guardians or caretakers? Can they be required to get a copy of the report that's, the search and seizure that's been done on their child?
I think we would need to talk with law enforcement, too, to determine if there was an investigation, a legal investigation, that it was a result of the search. I, I don't know that we would be at liberty to provide parents automatically with that information. Again, it's our practice to communicate with parents about everything. It depends on the situation, and to put language in that requires it could be putting.
Yeah, if it interferes, if that communication interferes with an ongoing investigation, that would not be okay.
If, it would only, I'm trying to think of the circumstances, it would not be okay if another child was mentioned in that, or I, I just can't understand any situation where it would not be okay for the parents to know, or guardians, that their child was searched or something was seized after the fact. I, it bothers me before the fact, but I can wrap my head around the safety situation of, you know, a bomb in a locker or something, I guess, is.
It depends on what participation all parties had involved. So we don't know who's in, when there's a dangerous situation, we don't know at the time who's all participating in the process.
But as far as a report in the end, if it's being shared with you that something happened.
Can I jump in here with a non-lawyer's observation?
Right.
If it elevated or escalated to a fairly situat, a serious investigation by law enforcement, the normal rights of a parent would apply outside of whatever the school board policy is.
So, okay, that's.
And I, I don't think that would lead to automatic disclosure, but I do think that school policy would not override normal.
Parent policy.
Law enforcement investigation regulations.
Can't create a policy that's going to supersede the law.
I understand that, but we can create a policy that goes above and beyond the law. Then if we don't know.
No, because if we added that and it's not allowed, then we have a policy that says something that the law doesn't permit.
I get that, but I understand, I also, just in the fact that, that, can you check to see if that cannot be added, that we can't give, that it would be against the law or put us in jeopardy for you to tell a parent that their child was searched?
I can tell you already from experience, we've had situations where the law has told us to stop, be quiet, and let us do our job. That has happened. And we, we have been told that. We've said, no, don't do anything, just sit on this until we finish our work. And then after they finish their work, then everything's fine.
But at that point, when they're doing their work, the parent is probably involved with the law enforcement, aren't they, at some point? Yes.
So that it's, it's beyond us at that point.
We don't, we don't need it.
So, we don't. It's out of our hands, and the parent's involved with another entity.
This is such a delicate situation that frankly, I would be opposed to asking for further changes here beyond what our council has already gone back and looked at and told us. I, I, I believe it's ready to be voted upon.
Can it just be voted upon separately off the consent agenda?
Yep, we can take it out.
Thank you.
So when we get to the consent agenda, if you pull it, and then we'll vote for it separately.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Let's do that. Okay, now, this is the second opportunity for presentations from the audience. Would anybody from the audience like to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to, oh, oh, I'm sorry, I missed your hand. Please come forward, state your name and your address, and if you'd use the microphone, that'd be great, and you have five minutes. Uh, there's a little switch at the bottom.
I just have a quick comment, I think, on the start and end times that you are considering for the Willmet Junior High.
Oh, could you please tell us your name and address, please?
Eileen Porwancher, 3147 Hill Lane.
Thank you.
And with respect to the start and end times of the school day, I don't want you to think that anything that I'm about to say means that I'm not a proponent of changing the schedule. I'm in favor of that, and I absolutely am in favor of children receiving at least 10 hours of sleep at night. For that reason, much to my children's dismay, they go to bed at 7:30, and they wake up at 6 o'clock in the morning. And with respect to the change in the start time for the Willmet Junior High, my question relates to how early will you allow students into the building? We both work and are downtown by 8:00 a.m., so we generally drop our children off safely at school to know that they're safe and in the building before we leave. That is the only school that you do not have an early care program, and you have historically allowed our children in around 7:00 a.m., regardless of your start time, and I just want to make sure that that will continue under the revised plan.
Yep, thank you, good question.
That's a good question, we'll look into it. We did not address that, and that's why we're having these forums, so people can give us feedback, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Yes, please come forward, state your name, address. You have five minutes, too. On the.
I've turned it on.
You're on.
So I have a question about the, the schedule, and, and it's a, some, I've met some of you, I've had the pleasure to meet a number of you, actually, so you probably already know what I'm going to ask. Have, have you considered the potential cost for the after-school care? Will the cost go up? And have you considered how much they will go up? And maybe that's something, if you haven't considered, that you should consider, because I think it'd be a longer day for the, for the parents and the students to pay for.
You mean personal after-school care?
Yeah, right, through the Park District.
Okay, so, um, okay, well, we'll have to look into that, then. Okay, thanks. And Dr. Lechner will get back to you. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and state your name and address, and you have five minutes. Probably not.
No?
Yes.
Yes. Beth Feeley, 610 Laurel Avenue, Willmet. I just had a couple of comments about the Equity Team initiative that you are, and I guess, rolling out, it sounds like. First of all, I was really happy to hear about the stressing of the idea of kindness that Mrs. Jackson was talking about earlier. I think that's wonderful, and I, I think a lot of the work that this team can and should do could really be wrapped up just in the golden rule of doing unto others, you know, treating others as you, as you would like them to treat you. I would like to request that you be really, to work with parents and really good communication about this program, especially with what exactly you're going to be teaching the students, the time that it's going to be taking during the day, just so that they have a good understanding of what to expect. I do think that this extends into the, beyond the reading, writing, arithmetic, which is fine, but it definitely falls within kind of character development, which clearly I do think parents obviously have a huge responsibility of, if not the responsibility in a child's life. And then the other thing I'd ask is that, and actually, Mr. Flanagan, you made a comment of this at the strategy meeting I attended, just the importance of language and being really clear about terminology. What do you mean by equity? I know Mrs. Jackson kind of defined it for us, but I think that that's going to be also really important, just in terms as you roll this program out. And then also, I had offered at that strategy meeting to be interviewed by Mrs. Thrasher, Dr. Thrasher, and I don't know that I got a phone call for that, but I would love that opportunity coming out of that meeting. So, thank you.
Great, thank you very much for your suggestions. Any, oh, please come forward.
My name is.
My name is Emily Downs. I live at twenty-four thirty-six Meadow Drive. Thank you for your time and what you're doing. Being on the school board is an unpaid position, and I appreciate you taking the time out, many, many hours, to do what you're doing. Just a couple of questions, I wanted to echo what the previous speaker said about being very careful as we get into the language of equity, race, and the whole slew of other social, emotional endeavors that we are embarking upon. If you're familiar with what's going on at New Tree right now, with the highly controversial seminar day tomorrow, I think that is an indication of the care that needs to be taken when we are entering into important topics, but also topics that can be very politically charged. And I think that those things definitely need to stay out of our schools. There are a lot of ways to go about this. I think we need to look at data. I think we need to make sure we have good data. We need to be, I would ask that you are very transparent on where the curricula is coming from, the processes of the initiatives, and what is behind those, what are the driving forces. So, I would ask that you are extremely careful in those arenas, because I think, while they may be necessary, that we do need to be very, to use the common word that we're using right now, mindful of what's going on. Secondly, regarding the absences, I would like to echo what Tracy Carney said regarding looking at avoidance and anxiety, and not just looking outward, but looking inward as to what is going on in the schools, what has changed in the schools. I think that was a really good point, and I would like, again, I think this all can be data-driven. It sounds like the new program that was being marketed. I, I, I like data. I think we need to get a lot of data and transparency. And then, finally, as, I've been in this district for eleven years. I've had children in D thirty-nine for eleven years. I will have children in D thirty-nine for the next ten years. I've been here for a while, and I'm, you're, I'm not going anywhere. As I have gone to teacher conferences over the years, what I am hearing is that there is more and more and more pressure on these teachers to teach more and more. They are not only asked to teach academics, they are asked to be social workers. They are asked to be, to connect with our children on a very deep level. They're asked to wear many, many hats. And while I think there's a lot of pressure on our educational system, I would like to see some data describing what we are taking out when we put something in. I think we are creating pressure cooker situations. I understand there are a lot of factors at play, but I think we're asking a lot of our teachers, and that, that is also trickling down to our children. And to go back to the point, is this creating more anxiety? Is this creating some of these social, emotional problems that we are seeing that are newly arriving? And there is some good data, there are some good books out there that are suggesting and are indicating increasingly alarming rates of anxiety and depression. And so, I think we need to look inward. Finally, I would say, when it comes to social, emotional, I think that parents need to be given a lot more responsibility. I don't think so much needs to be on the schools, and I don't think it's too much to ask the parents to take greater ownership of that teaching. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your comments. Please come forward. If you could state your name and address, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Sylvie Legere. I'm at five-ten Laurel Avenue, and I have a child in Willmett Junior High. So, thank you for your presentation. I just have a quick comment. I'm wondering, as you are presenting the different programs, if you could associate the resources that are assigned to researching and developing the program and the costs in terms of time and effort, and, and also the cost of implementation. I'd like to echo the previous speaker saying, what needs to come out, as we are bringing forward additional programs? So, and it would, it would be great to really be transparent about the cost of these initiatives. So, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for your comments. Anyone else interested in addressing the board? Okay, so, let's move on to our consent agenda. Are there any items the board would like to pull from the consent agenda?
I'd like to pull the third read policy, seven, it's not in front of me, but...
One forty.
Thank you. Colon one four zero.
Okay, great. We will pull that. Mr. Steen, will you please proceed with the consent agenda?
Sure. I move that we approve the personnel report dated February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen. I move that we, sorry, that we award the base bid project package for the summer twenty-seventeen construction project bids per bid specifications for the Willmett Junior High School boiler removal and replacement to the following contractors for a total cost of six hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and eight dollars. The contract value below includes a base bid only. This is the Willmett Junior High School Boiler Replacement, Amber Mechanical Incorporated, for an amount not to exceed five hundred and fifty-two thousand, seven hundred dollars. Shoreline Electric Company, for an amount not to exceed ninety thousand, four hundred and eight dollars, for a total Willmett Junior High project cost of six hundred and forty-three thousand dollars, one hundred and eight. I move that we approve the three-year contract for regular student transportation with Northshore I move that we approve the revised Special Education Work Plan. I move that we approve Moonlight as the best pict, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong envelope.
[laughter]
Yeah, somebody was listening, I'm so glad. I move that we approve the revised twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen District Thirty-nine School Calendar. I move that we approve the twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen Administrator's Contracts for McKenzie Principal and Administrator for Curriculum and Instruction. I move that we approve the application for Chloe Okninsky to complete her education as an eighth-grade tuition student at Willmett Junior High School for the twenty-sixteen, twenty-seventeen school year. I move that we approve the first reading of the revised Board of Education Policies, seven colon two forty, Conduct Code for Extracurricular Activities, seven colon two sixty, exemption from physical activity, seven colon two sixty-five, Pediculosis, seven colon two seventy, administering medicines to students, seven colon two eighty, communicable and chronic infectious disease, seven colon two eighty-five, food allergies, and new policy, seven colon two fifty, Student Support Services, and seven colon two seventy-five, orders to forego life-sustaining treatment. I move that we approve the accounts payable for bills listed between January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, and February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, in the following amounts. Educational Fund, four hundred and ten thousand, twenty dollars and sixty-five cents. O and M Fund, two hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and thirty-four dollars and fifty-two cents. Transportation Fund, one hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. Tort Fund, two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents, for a total, all funds, of seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and sixty-two cents. And I move that we approve the manual checks issued between January twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen, and February twenty-seventh, two thousand seventeen, in the following amounts. Educational Fund, four hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirteen cents. O and M Fund, twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. Transportation Fund, fifty-one dollars and thirteen cents. Tort Fund, sixty-one dollars and ninety-four cents, for a total, all funds, of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Thank you, Mr. Steen. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
[inaudible].
Yes.
Yes.
[inaudible].
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. The yeas have it. The consent agenda is approved. Now, may I have a motion to approve his third and final reading, the revised Board of Education Policy, seven colon one four zero?
I move to approve his third and final reading, the policy, seven colon one four zero.
Thank you. And may I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've, the motion's been moved and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
[inaudible].
Yes.
Yes.
No.
[inaudible].
Yes. Yes.
Yes. The yeses have it. The item is approved. Now, moving on to conference items, is there any old business? New business? Any good in welfare? Okay, may I seek a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss student discipline and specific personnel?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Motion's having been made and seconded. Would the clerk please call the roll?
[inaudible].
Yes.
Yes.
[inaudible].
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Motion is carried. We're adjourned to executive session. Thank you for attending the meeting tonight.